Today is March 4th, 2014, and I do call this meeting to order. And if we would, let's all begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our citizens, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we're going to ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take role for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczalski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Move on to the consent agenda. There are a number of items on the consent agenda that we would vote on with one vote, one motion. Is there any items that council would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And I'm not quite sure how to do this. The ordinance 3-14, if we could just pull that, there's just one sentence. It was kind of bugged me before, now it's been bugging me again, so I just want to talk about it.
Okay, so we are going to pull the ordinance number 0314 off of the consent agenda by the request of Alder Person Fenske, and we will put that, where do you want to go? Yeah, let's just go under unfinished business, and we'll do that right after the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some remaining items that are on the consent agenda. Anybody like to see any changes there? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda with that one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, then, of course, we have that one item that got added under the unfinished business, but we do not have any additional handouts, so what you see is what we have for the night.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Shamble, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thank you. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we do have a certificate of appreciation to John Lust for his five years of service to the city. John is not here tonight, but Brennan will make sure that he gets that. Thanks Brennan. We were just talking about that. We didn't think that, we didn't realize that he'd been here five years. Time goes by fast, doesn't it? And then also, we did get a thank you note from Pastor Tyler Wolf. He was at our last meeting, and he just thanked us for our time. That is in your packet, and it's just informational purposes. Okay, under unfinished business, then, we have resolution number 1339. This is a final resolution levying special assessment against benefited properties for the runway drive sewer extension project. Is this you, Henry?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the final action on this project that will set the final special assessments. In the attach the resolution, you can see the report that our Director of Public Works prepared. I prepared it for John, so, but it does describe the project. It describes the overall costs. I'm trying to get to it, sorry here.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
Starts twenty-two.
Oh my God, I went past it. And it gives the overall cost, and I think this project came in quite well, well under budget, and I'm sure everyone who's receiving the assessments will be happy about that. The overall budget initially was estimated at $95,000, and with all our costs, it came in at about $66,700. And then you can see how the assessments will be dispersed. And if you'll remember, Walter Vincent Leasing, which is Schmidt Boat docks and lifts, is picking up 35% of the overall cost, so that's why their assessment is as high as it is. And then everybody else was allocated based on a per acre cost of $1,797.79. So assuming approval, we would then proceed to get the assessments out and to these affected property owners. If anybody has any questions?
Okay. John, we are, just one question, I think maybe this got asked before, but I just want to make sure. Casprek Automotive did put in a septic system at one time. We are not requiring him to hook up at this time.
Yeah, he does not have sanitary sewer contiguous to his property for sanitary. Sanitary is not run past his property.
Okay, alright.
That's correct.
Alright, just wondering.
Okay. Now, he does own the old Ferg Farmstead, and that's why he's being assessed.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
I think he just purchased that last year.
Okay, we would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution, then?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Olson, that we approve of resolution number 1339. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczalski.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
And Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next, then we'll go back to the ordinance that got moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. This is ordinance number 0314, and ordinance amending chapter seven of the Wapaka City Traffic Code. And this is actually the second reading, and Alder Person Fenske has asked that that be put on the regular agenda, so I'll let her.
Okay, there's only one thing that I would ask to be changed. If you look on page 10, under section two, parent A, number two, lot two, surface lot located at the former QuickTrip property, could we take out former QuickTrip property? It's not going to make a difference. It's got the address in there, and I don't think anybody really cares that that was the former QuickTrip property. We don't have any other former whatever property in anything else.
If this becomes amended that way, does it have to come up for a second reading next time?
No.
No?
You mean the former QuickTrip property across from the Joneses' house?
Yeah, with the Kenyatta.
And the former Johnson house that was parking lot number one?
Yeah. Can we call that?
Yeah, I, that's probably, for construction, that's probably a really good idea, yeah.
Okay, so if we're okay with just amending that line to take out QuickTrip property, former QuickTrip property, we'd be looking for a motion, then, to approve it with that one change.
I'd so move.
Second.
Motion by Fenske, second by Keeland, that we approve of the resolution number 0314, 2014, with that one change. Any discussion? Roll call voice. Go ahead Sandy.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Porczalski.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. We have license report number 1214. This is a special class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages and wine, and there is one for May 3rd, 2014, which is for the Wapaka Historical Society, for the railroad depot, and then also on the Arts on the Square, which is put on by the Wapaka Community Arts Board, and that's on August 15th and 16th of this year. As you can see in your packet. I'm going back there again. Anybody have any questions on the license report?
Chief Coke, those are okay?
I noticed that one of them requested the underage issued be lifted for that event, and I guess I didn't fully understand why that was being requested.
It must be the Arts on the Square.
Yes.
I think they're expecting folks under, you know, little drinking age to be in.
This is a tent today, and it's an enclosed area, alright?
Yeah, well, it's really the whole downtown, City Hall, downtown block, basically, but this, where they're doing this, is the tent on Fulton.
Okay.
They serve food under the tent as well?
Friday night, they have their fish fry. If it's the same as last year, Friday night, they have their fish fry, and then on Saturday, they have vendors that come in. This is a little bit different, they're not here, but it's a little bit different in that they requested the application for the temporary license for just one day last year. They're asking for two days this year, but they're asking a vendor or vendors to actually sell beer and wine on the day, on the Saturday during the day, and they do have bans in there at that time, too, so they wanted to try it this year. So that's the only difference between last year and this year. But it's all done under the tent, you're right, and it is, they do have that fence that they do put around it. That's all I know. Anybody, chief is okay with that, as he has said? Anybody else have any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve license report number 1214. Second.
Motion by Shamble, second by Lockwood, that we approve of the special class B temporary license, license report number 1214. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Yes, I did them both together.
It's fine.
Okay. Alright, next, then, we, Brad, you're getting to be a regular here, but we have a review of the city's debt policy, and Henry, do you want to set this up, or you?
Well, everyone knows Brad. Brad's with RW Baird. He's been our financial advisor and was brought in a couple of months ago to talk about capital financing, and then we got into discussion of our debt policy, and the mayor wanted to bring him back, and this was as kind of, as soon as we could get it done with our schedule, so.
Okay.
Brad.
Thanks. So in your packets, there should be a one-page summary of really a sampling of Wisconsin municipal debt policies. This isn't every policy in the state, but this is really just a sampling of, from a polling that Henry had of his peers, and then of some policies that Baird helped to write, so not all of these issuers are Baird clients. Some of these issuers are served by other firms, so hopefully that gives, you know, a sense that there's, you know, Baird's fingerprints aren't all over each one of these debt policies. What I'd point out here is that these policies are, you know, they're sort of all over the place. The far left-hand column shows the policy limitations in terms of, or the debt limitations in terms of the percent of geo-debt as a percentage of equalized valuation, and state statute sets the upper cap at 5%. So you can see there's several, there's one, two, three, four, there's seven issuers here, seven municipalities, that just repeat what's in state statute in this policy. So in and of itself, the policy is no more limiting than state statutes. There's a, looks like three different issuers that are more restrictive than what's allowed under state statute, as far as that, as a percent of TIDIN. Then, when you look at your policy, for example, you use TIDOUT as the metric, and you are more restrictive than what would be state statute at 3.75%. As you work your way to the right-hand side of the page, we've incorporated or included what's reflected in policies in terms of the debt service as a percent of budget. So some communities measure that as a percent of revenues, some as a percent of expenditures. I think for practical purposes, that we can consider those essentially the same in terms of limitations to policy. So your policy says that your debt service on tax levy supported general obligation, or I'm sorry, tax levy supported debt won't exceed 15% of your general fund revenues. So that is a little more restrictive here than most, with the exception of Wauwatosa, a AAA rated community, and they set that limit at 10%. Others use, you can see, as high as 50% for Economowalk, and I'd say that 20 to 30% seems more reasonable to me. Once you start exceeding, say, 25 to 30% of your budget going towards debt, rating agencies would consider that an elevated debt, you know, debt level. Now, the city doesn't have a bond rating, but just to put in perspective, if you were to go out and ask for a bond rating, anytime you're 25, 30%, they would note that as high debt. The city of Manitowoc, on the far right-hand column, you'll see they have, that's not part of their written policy, but an informal policy, that city is trying to pay off its debt. The city has very high debt levels, so their informal policies, they're not going to borrow more in any one year than they pay off in principal in a given year. So that's an effort to really bring down their overall debt burden. And again, that's an informal policy, it's not part of their written policy. When you look at communities like Holbert and Algoma, part of their policy includes that the principal repayment is going to be level each year. Generally, we, the city, Wapaka, has a little more flexibility in that we would either look at a level debt service, or a level mill rate, or something, or try to step into increases in the mill rate. Anytime you see a community that issues debt with level principal payments, that means the total payments are going to be higher on the front end than they are in the later out years. Now, that's prudent from a management standpoint, it's going to help reduce the overall interest expense, but it does mean the trade-off is there's a higher, a greater impact to taxpayers in the early years than there would be later out. Some of these other repayment limitations in the right-hand column call for certain amount of debt of principal to be repaid within a given time period. Anytime you'll see debt repaid where 75% is amortized or repaid within 10 years or less, that's considered a rapid repayment of debt. Once you get beyond that, like a West Bend here uses 60%, 60% is probably an average repayment of a 20-year obligation, if anything, or maybe a little below average, so that's not really restrictive at all. Brookfield, again, a AAA community, they're, they set their bogey there at 70%, and Two Rivers is at 50%, so again, not very restrictive community. So I think this was intended really to be a jumping off point for what the mayor was hoping from the last meeting I was at anyway, that there'd start to be a discussion if you have the appropriate debt policy, if the city feels you need to make changes to the policy. I think the policy of the city was enacted or adopted back in 2003, so it's been a little while, probably makes sense to at least look at it. Doesn't mean your policy's broken, but I want to make sure you have the right policy in place as you start to deliberate on capital projects going into your 2015 budget.
Anybody have any questions of Brad?
Brad, how important is it for the city to go out and try to get a bond rating? Is that something the council should consider?
Yeah, I don't think the city, you know, the analysis that I've done, I don't think the city would get to the A3 level. That's the, you know, that's the entry level of an A bond rating. And in general, if you're not, if you're not able to get to that A level, it's going to cost more in interest payments to have a rating than it would to go out to the market as a non-rated entity. Now, when we get closer to finalizing some of your capital plans, you know, take another look at that, but from the analysis I've been doing over the past several years, that's my initial conclusion.
So the rating agencies actually look at the five-year plan?
Yes.
And then whether you have something in place, and, okay.
That's a component of the evaluation of the management, you know, of the city. They'll look at economic environment and economic conditions, the finances, the debt, and then policy type issues of general fund policy, capital improvement planning, debt policies, the willingness to raise taxes if needed, or raise revenues if needed. All of those go into the credit analysis.
Do they look, when we go out to borrow money using the bond avenue, do they look at our debt policies at all, too? They do?
Yeah, they would view having a debt policy that's followed, that's adhered to. They'd view that as a rating positive.
Okay.
Now, if there's a policy in place and it's not adhered to, that's not a rating positive at all, so.
It's the opposite, okay. So, I mean, as we look at the different municipalities that, and this isn't all-inclusive, I understand that, but we notice that all of the communities except for Wapaka is using TIDIN to, as one of their debt policies, where we're using TIDOUT. So to make things simpler for looking at our debt policy and doing comparisons, I would think that we would want to try and be similar to what other communities are doing.
Sure.
So that would be one thing that I would think that we would want to look at, obviously, and that would coincide with some of those other columns as we go across there, too. That one where you talked about the maturity limitations, if I remember right, the state says that you have to pay that within a 20-year period.
That's correct.
So they're just, again, most of the communities, including Wapaka, are just repeating what the state law says.
Right. Some are taking it and saying, on average, a certain percentage will be paid within 10 years, but if you have a 60-year average repayment, or 60% average repayment in 10 years, that's, it's going to translate to a 20-year bond. I mean, that's just how the math is going to work out. So you're, so for example, West Bend, that's no more restrictive than state statutes would allow.
Okay. And as you looked at this, Brad, what, what would you suggest?
I think the 15% is more restrictive now than we're seeing, you know, than we saw 10, 11 years ago. So, and, like Shorewood Hills, 25%, obviously a very different characteristics of Shorewood Hills, but they set their limit at 25% of the budget. I think Wauwatosa's is more restrictive than you would need to be. You know, again, very different characteristics to Wauwatosa than Wapaka. So keeping in some sort of a policy statement, I think, as what debt would be as a percent of budget, I think is appropriate. I guess it's up to you to decide what that number is, or it's up to the, you know, the council.
Now, what do you think about that, when you talk, I think it was the city of Manitowoc, when you talked about you can't, you can't borrow more principal than what you're actually paying off?
Well, I think it's great for Manitowoc, but they've had, they're paying $7 million of principal annually right now, you know, so they've got a, they're starting from a very high debt level, and they're attempting to bring that debt down. We, I was just there last night for a bond sale, and they issued $2.2 million, you know, and they paid off seven this year. So they're, and they in fact had a negative outlook on their bond rating. That negative outlook was removed because of, you know, in part because of this policy.
Sure.
But you're coming from, the city, you're coming from a little bit different standpoint that your debt isn't as high as, you know, as Manitowoc's, so.
By percentage.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So the good thing is, is we have a debt policy in place, which is very useful to us, and I'm not necessarily saying that we have a bad thing, but I think that what we'd like to do is be able to compare ourselves to other communities, and I would think people that are lending us money would like to be able to compare us to other communities, too. So I think we should look at changing this so it matches some of the other communities, and as far as percentages and so on, that's obviously up for discussion. We're not asking for a decision tonight, obviously, but I'm just talking our process as we move forward in trying to look at our debt policy a little bit more. But again, this was really just for informational purposes tonight, and it was for you to see what other communities are doing, and then look at what we're going to be doing in the next few months here.
Mayor, will Brad be forwarding to us a different comparison? That is, will we be compared to other communities as TIDIN, so we can compare more realistically with other communities, or is that something that we're not going to see?
Well, Brad.
Yeah, I can, I mean, we can, I put together that one-page summary based on your current policy. I can.
Right.
Put that together based on TIDIN to show you where you're at, and you can use that to decide where your, if your policy's appropriate, or what percentage it needs to be changed to.
I think the mayor has a good point, you know, comparing, it's almost, it's not apples to oranges, but it is different.
Yeah.
So it might be useful to have.
Sure.
A TIDIN comparison.
I can get that for you, Paul, yeah.
That'd be great. Anything else? Anybody? Not hearing much. Brad, anything else you?
No, I don't think so. I mean.
Question, can you explain a little bit more about what the TIDIN versus TIDOUT?
Sure.
What that is exactly?
It's the measure of equalized valuation in the city, and TIDIN just means it's capturing all value in the city. TIDOUT means we're looking at all the value except TID districts. So any of the value of TID districts is removed from TIDIN to give you the TIDOUT number. So when you set your budget annually, you're really looking at assessed value. The equalized value is the state's assessment of full value to the city, either with or without TID. It's the only difference.
Brad, would that include TID debt also?
It's the equalized valuation, so it's just looking at the property values.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Brad.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So you will see, I'm not sure in the next, not, not, not the next meeting in March, but you will see either in April or May that we will be coming back. Brad's going to get us a loan formation, and, and we will continue to discuss the debt policy and where we want to move with that. Okay, let's move on, then, to, this is some personnel matters that we have in front of you, and there's a couple of recommendations. One coming from the Director of Public Works, John Edelbeck, and then we have a couple that are related to the Parks and Rec Department, too. So Henry, are you setting this up, or?
Yeah, I can do that, Mayor, thank you. Well, now that, you know, we're, we have a full staff of department heads, and they're getting into their jobs and progressing very nicely, I've, you know, I've had a chance to work with department heads and kind of start looking at areas a little deep, more deeply, and areas that I'm responsible for with the city as a city administrator, and one of them is personnel. And over the last, it's in my cover memo, and I'll hit it really quickly. Over the last few months, I've met with department heads, and we've identified some needs. And I tried to outline what those needs are by department and try to assign, you know, who might take that on. A lot of these items would probably require some tag teaming with the department heads, myself, and maybe some outside personnel consultants. And I've tried to attribute some cost to them as best as I know it based on some conversations I've had on, with others on these types of projects. But there were a couple of things that came out really across all departments. One is all our job descriptions. They were last done about 14 years ago. And at a minimum, I think we should have them run through just to make sure that they're accurately reflecting what everybody's duties are. But more importantly, you know, are they still legal? I can't tell you if they're meeting the legal test in terms of our, you know, are they discriminatory, are they hitting all the things they need to for us in local government? And that would be something I, I don't think we have the capacity to do in-house entirely. It would take some coordination from us in-house, but we would need some, some help outside. And, and I think we could do that for 150 to 175 bucks a position. So, somewhere around $7,000 to $8,000, I think that could be accomplished. We have about 50 positions in the city. With the passage of Act 10, which was the law that basically eliminated our all non-public safety unions, we basically now have a, no system for a lot of our employees. You know, under labor agreements, they had set pay. There were set rules on the work environment. Now, we took a lot, care a lot of that stuff, and we updated our personnel handbook. If you remember, we went through a very, I think, a really nice process as an organization and updated that handbook. And a lot of that was taken care of. But we've got positions that will be coming vacant in the public works area, for instance, that, how do we set the pay, you know, for that position? So, that's, that's, you know, out there. We have some positions that came up a couple of months ago when we had an individual that was hired while the union was still in place, or, excuse me, right after the union basically dissolved. He got a higher certification, and we brought forward the recommendation to lift his pay. But, and it was approved, but is that, is that system still relevant? Is where that pay is now relevant? I think some of our departments kind of want to do a top-down review of duties and how they're organized, and there might be some need to, you know, alter duties as they do that. Again, that's a project I'm sure will take a little bit of time. Every position has duties and responsibilities. How do we measure whether people are effective in those jobs? And trends you're seeing now are that every job could be whittled down to probably four or five key components. And if people are meeting those expectations, then they're doing fine. But how do we measure that? And what is the process that we want to use to do that? And then, most of you won't remember this, but when the, well, maybe most of you will. When the clerical union was formed, the council at the time actually argued that a couple of the positions should not be in the union, that they should be actually a salary position, that they were, their duties, they had some autonomy in making decisions, they managed budgets, they managed people. So, we weren't successful making that argument. One of the positions is on the agenda for your consideration tonight. But there are, in my discussions with department heads, maybe a few positions that we should just convert from hourly to salary, given their responsibilities. But that needs to be evaluated. I'm not, you know, fully comfortable doing that without some outside help. Having said that, on the agenda for your consideration, are a couple of actions that I think would get us moving in the right direction that are things that we have talked about for a number of years. On the wastewater treatment plant team leader, if you remember, Deb, that issue came up when we met with the union four or five years ago, that they wanted to adjust the pay because this person has, have more responsibilities. He's basically, in a lot of ways, providing supervision. He can't just do discipline, you know, he couldn't do discipline. And a union brother disciplining another union brother was a problem. So, there was, it was a little bit awkward, but we made it work. And we used the talents back then to give a gentleman a little bit more responsibility. And we basically are running that department with one less person. And I know John may want to kick in. The other one before you is in the Park and Rec Department. And we're bringing forth the idea that this individual's actually now supervising people that he didn't have to when he was in the union. And the job is asking and requiring that he have a certification for playground safety. So, we think, given that, that there's some consideration maybe for his pay to be increased as well. But I think at a minimum, these job descriptions should be altered because they've been kind of percolating within our departments for a couple of years now. But I would suggest a further discussion on doing it citywide for all our jobs. I don't know if anybody has any questions? And I don't, if the department heads want to add anything on that, I don't...
I do have a question. On the, the people that we're talking about removing from the union and putting them in a salary position, are they okay with this?
Well, there is no unions anymore.
I know, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Okay.
You've had that discussion, Erin, yeah?
The, the one person in our department that we're suggesting move to salary, yes, would be in favor of that.
Okay, thanks.
And this is one position that we argued should not have been in the union in the first place.
I remember that, yep.
Henry, do we, we're kind of not creating a new position, but sort of different wording. Do we have to post this or anything for legal purposes?
I don't know that you're creating a new position. I think you're realigning, you're basically looking at what the individual's doing. I think you're basically, in the first case, the wastewater treatment plant situation, you basically have an individual now that is required to do supervision, but he can't perform any discipline or follow-up. That has to go to the Director of Public Works. Now, it's worked in the last few years, and we've made it work. But it just seems like that responsibility for following up, you're with the people every day, you're working with them, it just, you know... And the union wouldn't allow that person to really discipline. We couldn't, you know, obviously that wouldn't work for them. So, it was sort of an awkward hybrid, but we made it work because we were down, we were able to eliminate one position. We basically eliminated the superintendent's position. But now, what's being suggested is this person would be elevated to superintendent. We have a superintendent in water, and we have a superintendent in streets.
I understand, yeah.
And so, this person would be on par. So, I think these actions before you, and I know when we talked about this in the budget, there was a lot of concern of doing a citywide pay study and getting comparables and the expectations of what happens when you do that. I think what we're doing here is just trying to get internal equity just within our own organization to get people at a level that seems reasonable and justified based on what they're doing. On, on, on the...
So, your, your answer is no, we don't have to post it or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure we would have to post it anyways, Scott. We're not, they're not unions anymore, so...
Well, was that a union rule? I didn't know.
Yeah, why would we have to post it?
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, maybe for morale within the employees so that one of them could take that position if they qualified for it.
Right.
We might do that.
Yeah.
But otherwise, I wouldn't say we have to. John, let's just start with Jeff. Is there anything you want to add to what Henry has said?
Yeah, and I hope you read my memo. I tried to be descriptive in kind of what happened. This was a hybrid, it worked very well for us. Again, any type of job performance evaluations and any type of reprimands, issues, warnings and that, would, were not able to be completed by this, by Jeff, by the super, or the operations team leader. And I guess we're just trying to normalize this position to all our other positions and where the superintendent on a daily basis can perform those duties, which is really, as Henry said, that's really your most effective, is working with the individuals on a daily basis, you know, for, for those types of performance evaluations and feedback and that. Jeff currently, as an operations team leader and an hourly person, does have the ability to collect comp time. So, he will lose that opportunity with salary. So, even though there is a proposed 3% increase or $1,700 a year increase, I don't know how much he cashed in his comp time in the past or how much he used of his comp time, but that would actually be deducted from that. So, let's say he cashed in 40 hours at $25 an hour, that's $1,000. That he would have been paid previous years, he won't have that, but he obviously will have this bump in pay. So, I guess my point is, is that this dollar amount could actually be less than the 1,700 on actual budget impacts. I did talk to Jeff about this. This, as Henry said, this does bring him, using our existing structure that we have right now, this brings him to the water superintendent level. So, we would be recommending deleting the operation team leader, again, which was a hybrid, moving that to wastewater superintendent. You can see the other structures that we have currently with certifications of the operators and such. But it, it, like I said, it normalizes it. I did add a sheet, I did call around and did get some prices, some hourly rates from other positions. As you can see, every city is a little bit different on how they structure things. Plus, we don't know benefits and how that might affect salaries, hourly rates. So, it's, it's a little bit difficult, but I think what you can glean from that last page is that this position is not overpaid. I mean, this, we're not high in, by any means, at this point. So, this is, you know, in my department, this is a unique situation that I think, once the unions went away, I would like to straighten this out and normalize this to a wastewater superintendent.
John, I think the other point, too, is the on-call, the pager pay, right? And that's wrapped into this as well. If you remember, a year or so ago, we got away from that for the supervisors and actually built it into their, their pay. So, we didn't have to, you know, manage that because the, they had salary, people were being treated, or trying to be treated equally to the hourly, and it was...
Right, and that's part of the comp time that I was referring to.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I'm still a little bit confused. Is this an hourly position or a salary position?
No, we're recommending it be modified to salary.
All right, so exempt salary position. So, it's not really an hourly rate, but rather some annual amount?
That's correct.
Okay.
We always, yeah, you're correct. We always reference our salaries as hourly so that we can clearly identify what increases in that. But this is on the last paragraph, we are recommending that this be modified to, to go to a salary position.
John, refresh me, is, are our street superintendent and the water superintendent, are they salary right now then, too?
Uh, yes.
They are salary?
Yes.
How do you want the motions on this? Can you take both at the same time?
No, I think we should do one at a time, but, yeah. I mean, just because they're different departments and stuff.
No, I meant like A and B together.
Boy, I, I think, to tell you the truth, and this is, understand where I'm trying to come here, is that I think we should do it separately because I don't think we want to, we don't want to make, we want to make sure that when they go through this job description change, if council agrees to do that in the future, that every time that we make a change in job description, that means that there's a pay increase, if you follow what I'm saying. So, I guess that's why I'm requesting that we maybe do that A and B as, as separate motions. In this case, you know, we save money by, and they've justified it, you know, a number of times here. But, and it only makes sense, fair for John, too, that he can get back to doing his job and not having to do part of the wastewater treatment plant's job, too. So, it does make sense. Although, you know, the big question, of course, is where are we getting the money from to do this? And I'm assuming that you're going to find it within the operations of the wastewater treatment plant for this year. But what do we do next year, you know? Do we, I mean, is, is this going to be added on over and above what your budget is for next year, then?
Well, I think Gene will let you know, but I mean, we, we came in quite a bit under budget this year, and we'll, we'll budget for that next year. I don't think that will be a concern.
Okay. Okay. I mean, this is obviously outside the budget process. So, whenever we do this, we have to find the monies to do this. Either we take it out of reserves or they find it within their budget. This is an enterprise fund, obviously, so this is coming directly out of the wastewater treatment plant, and that's what you're proposing.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, your answer is two different motions?
Okay.
So, any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd move that we approve elimination of the wastewater operator's team leader position description and replace it with the wastewater treatment superintendent position.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion by Fenske and a second by Kealan. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, so now we would be looking at, since he has the added duties and the other things that Henry and John talked about, he would be going from an hourly employee to a salaried employee at, effectively at a rate of $26.83 per hour.
I would move for approval, adding that it would begin with the next pay period, right?
That's what they're requesting.
Second?
Motion by Fenske, second by Kealan, that we approve of this pay increase and go from an hourly employee to a salaried employee, starting with the next pay period. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, next, we have letter C. Let's, let's just talk about, C and D go together, err, right? And then E is a whole different issue. But again, I would like to see us do C and D as separate motions when we do discuss that.
Okay. First, we'd like to start off by proposing the, the updated job description for our current parks caretaker job, which is Josh Peterson in our department. Just to give you a little background, and it is outlined in the memo as well, but Josh did start in 2006, and at that time, we did have a parks superintendent as well as that parks caretaker job. Obviously, there's been quite a bit of movement in the department since then. And now Josh is the lone parks worker that is taking care of about 300 acres of parks here in Wapaka. With that, he's also taken over the responsibility of supervising our seasonal staff, and that can run from April to October as we do have some college kids that hang around in the fall and start early in the spring helping with leaf pickup and getting diamonds prepped and that. So, there are some also things that, when we were looking at the job description, we did notice that, that they should just be added in there. He's been doing this for quite some time. But as you can see in the packet, the job description, we have highlighted number four, which would be on page two of the job description. Just refers to some tree trimming. And then number nine refers to performing forestry duties within the parks as well as helping the public works with that. On the next page, we do have under qualifications, under number three, that's highlighted. We did state that this position must obtain certification in playground safety inspection through the National Parks and Recreation Association within one year of being hired. Josh has done that this past fall, is when he obtained that. So, that, those are the major... So that, those are the major changes in the job description. He also, I guess one thing I didn't note, or didn't note, is that in number one, on page one of the job description, this position does assist with payroll duties, meaning that he signs off on the employees that he does supervise throughout that time period, each pay period, and he makes sure that those are accurate. With this job description change, we are also requesting a pay increase from 2202 an hour to 2368 per hour. This is an annual increase of about $3,958.64. That includes the fringe benefits, and this is budgeted money that we currently have in our parks' part-time wages. We came in about $10,000 under budget and that this last year. And to Mayor's question, to John, this is something that we would not be looking to add next budget. This is something we feel we can keep, keep in there without adding on top. This also would change this position's title from parks caretaker to parks crewman slash foreman. That is on par with what Eddie Roush is in John's department of the street department. This is, we've tried to keep it so it kind of follows the same structure as current city employees and what their job descriptions are. And Eddie does have supervisory responsibilities in the field, day in and day out, when Roger's not around, and when Roger's not there, he also assumes all supervisory responsibilities for the street department. So if anyone has any questions?
And again, this is salaried exempt?
This one is not. This one would stay hourly.
Okay. I, this request, we talked about this at the council level earlier, or probably?
I don't know if we've brought it up at council.
Okay, it was just something that we brought up.
I think we've talked about it in mayor's meetings and such.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. I know I've had this discussion probably since, probably a year, you know, just at my level with Aaron.
Mm-hmm.
So letter C under this, 3C, is just updating the job description to what Josh is actually doing. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this.
Make a motion, we amend the position description for the former parks caretaker position to parks skilled slash foreman to reflect supervisory, increase supervisory responsibilities and required certification.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Lockwood, second by Shamble, that we approve of this recommendation for the foreman's, skilled crewman foreman's position in parks and rec department. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, so next, then we are looking at the request from the parks director, Aaron Johnson, for a revised pay schedule for this position.
I move that we authorize an adjusted pay for the revised position from 2202 an hour to 2368 per hour.
Second?
A motion by Kealan, second by Shamble, that we adjust the pay for this position that we just talked about before, from $22.02 per hour to $23.68 per hour. Effective with the next pay period also.
Yes.
With the beginning of the next pay period. You're good with that?
Yes.
Dave, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion?
Aaron, with the budgeted amount you're going to have to have here, you've talked about it's in your budget now, and you foresee it's always not going to increase your budget. Am I reading that right in the coming years?
Correct.
You'll just hire less part-time people or?
Well, I think, and this happened before, I came into this position, but I think $10,000 was added to our part-time wages at some point for what I believe was talked about as a, almost like a three-quarters of the year position to help in the parks. We decided that it was more beneficial to us to hire extra summer help, as summer is our main season. And with that, there was considerable savings, which, that's kind of what we're looking at here. So we came in about, well, like I said, I think it was $10,000, but that can vary each year, depending on weather, depending on how much it rains, how much grass we have to cut.
Nothing till July this year.
Yeah, exactly.
Be able to use a sled hill, so.
Right, yeah, no kidding. So if that answers-
You feel comfortable in the years to come, then this will kind of be the same case as this coming year?
Right, yeah. I mean, I think we have enough room there to-
Always think you'd have enough room, okay?
Yes.
There wouldn't be a big increase in budgets, just accommodate this position, okay?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And then, Aaron, you have one more here?
Yeah, the last one we have on the list here is, we have talked about the senior center coordinator position in the past. And what we're recommending here is that because of the nature of Terry's job, with her having a lot of weekend events, a lot of evening events, I am asking that she comes to park board meetings and such, now that her job and her work would be better suited in a salary position, especially with the fact that we are now having to counter hours, making sure she's under 30 hours per week. You know, I honestly didn't know that this was a possibility to have a .725 full-time equivalent position, be salaried, until Henry kind of mentioned it a few months ago. Henry had looked into it, he reached out to the Vorhees and Associates, which is in your memo, and the only thing that they, they gave Terry a survey, she filled it out. They said that this would make sense to make her a salaried position with the, they did make a suggestion that the change should be made in the job description, which is highlighted in your packets for her job description. And I guess I just want to make everyone aware that this is, you know, this isn't a pay increase, it's just, it's just a way to, I guess, better suit her position.
Okay, so again, what Aaron is requesting here is that she goes from a part-time employee to a part-time salaried position, which, again, Henry has done the research on this. I didn't realize that that was something that was available to us either. But the key here, obviously, is that Terry was one of those part-time employees that got hit by the Affordable Health Care Plan, where we needed to make sure that her hours were less than the 30 hours a week, and that's why her hours actually got reduced from 32 hours to 20-
29.
29 hours a week. And this is making the best of what we had to do there by her being able to spread her hours to, well, I guess in a way to expand her hours so that she could do things besides just be there when the senior center is open.
Right.
Okay?
I make a motion, we amend the senior center coordinator position description to move the position from a non-exempt hourly position to a .725 exempt salary position. No changes in pay requested.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion by Lockwood, second by Olson, that we approve of this change to the senior center coordinator position. Any discussion?
Henry, explain, does this gain us something around that Affordable Care Act, or doesn't it? I'm a little confused there on the, she still has to stay?
Well, it, again, it makes her life a lot easier, having her how to get clocked in. For Aaron to manage those hours every pay period, make sure they're 29, it's set in the pay, this is what, this is what it is. So it does, I think it gives another tool to manage the hours, to set them where they need to be.
Yeah. So it kind of helps with that aspect of-
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to sit there and micromanage, you know, every hour she's in, because she, you know, with the amount of stuff they do in the senior center, it's always close to that 30 hours, and this way, we feel like she can accommodate everything they have been doing. And in essence, we're probably getting more than the 30 hours out of her per week. Terry is okay with this, this is kind of what she wants, so.
Good, thanks.
The Vorhees has done a good job on inserting the proper wording for salaried exempt. And I don't know if we need to do it at council level, but that job description definitely has to change along with this. So it's not just a matter of changing the person to the non-exempt position. We also have to have that salaried, that job description included as part of it.
And that's right here, I don't-
Yeah, the italicized part on page 58.
Yeah, and it is in the draft.
Okay.
Job description. That was the motion though, right, to also change the job description? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Did I already do that? Okay, thank you. All right, I just want to make one more comment about this. You heard Henry at the beginning talk about job descriptions, and they haven't, haven't been adjusted unless we hire someone, that's when they look at the job descriptions. And he is going to come forward with a recommendation, I don't know if it's going to be at the next meeting or in a few meetings, and ask for this. I haven't decided whether I, I think it's a good idea or not, to tell you the truth, but that is something that you're going to see in the future. I think it's very important for us to understand, though, that we set up a precedent here that we have to make sure that we don't follow, is that, and I said this before, that when we change job descriptions, that doesn't necessarily mean that it is a pay increase or a pay decrease. It depends, you know, it depends on a number of things. And obviously, they gave their case tonight, and you agreed that that was worthwhile to do that, but that isn't always going to be the case. With that said about the job descriptions, if we have job descriptions that have not been changed in seven years, or tweaked, or even looked at, you know, something needs to be done there. If you have a job description, you need to do something about it. So, I mean, we're going to have to figure out a way to do that some way, whether we do it internally, try and do it internally, or we try to do it with some assistance from the outside. Obviously, you are all seeing the effects of two things. One, we don't have the unions anymore, and that's where a lot of this would have been taken care of at the negotiation level. And number two, we no longer have a personnel committee, so that personnel committee is us, and that's why we're having those discussions here. Okay? So those are the two reasons for that. Okay, moving on, I have nothing additional to talk about, so I guess we're just looking for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Lockwood, second by Kealan, that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, which is March 18th, 2014, at 6:00 PM, subject to call. Any discussion? Oops, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thanks, everybody, for watching and attending.